For a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff Reserve to be held on Monday, November 4th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Lisa, would you like to introduce your pastor for the invocation?
Yes, for the invocation tonight, I have my pastor Ben Higgins of the First Church of God.
Please rise and remain standing.
Thank you, Counselor, for the invitation to pray tonight. Let's bow our heads. Lord, we count it great joy to be able to serve your kingdom and to serve your city. It is yours. And I ask that you would bless this council with wisdom, with patience, with insight that would allow them to execute civil service in a way that is pleasing to you and that honors our community, Lord. I pray that you would allow your peace to rest in this place, that your providence would reign. We don't pretend to believe that this isn't your city and your people, and I pray that you would have your way tonight. We declare it. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Richard Deason, Amets Post 29.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clark Young.
Councilwoman Parson.
Here.
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflictive interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. See none. Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. I have Jim Christman.
First of all, let me thank you all for being public citizens. I'm Jim Christman, 464 North Main. Sorry about that. You certainly earn your dollar a year from the abuse you take. I also want to especially thank Mayor Smith and Mayor Pro Tim Davis for the forums that they held a couple of weeks ago. I think it's wonderful to get citizens' input at some of these meetings. Much of what I have to say tonight is not a slap at local government, but I think it is things that need to be considered by you as you move forward. One of the lies that we have told ourselves is that we want to redevelop downtown. Do we? After having Tracy Fresh, Penny McGath, and Jerika Fox as well-paid downtown directors for a number of years, following a major study from a well-paid consultant with very little tangible benefit? I don't have the answer with what it's going to take to redevelop downtown, but I believe community meetings, like was just mentioned, is certainly a step in the right direction. We have spent over a million dollars at the depot, putting on a roof, rebuilding the staircase. Thank you taxpayers, 90% of that was what you paid for. Let me share two possible visions of downtown. First of all, let's walk down Main Street and put ourself in the shoes of a business executive that's coming to town to scout a new location for his firm. If what you find is a burned-out building and boarded-up stores, no new buildings, no new stores in the last several years, is that the kind of place that you're going to relocate your facility or locate a new facility? I would consider more favorably something that there is a reason to go downtown and have a favorable impression of what we call Papa Bluff. The second lie that we tell ourselves is that Papa Bluff is a growing city. This is both true and not true. In the past 30 years, that's not something in the recent future, but over a period of time, we've had no population growth. We have had very little growth in the geographic boundaries over the past 30 years. And certainly, the budgets have only kept up with inflation. The area outside the city has grown, but the city has not benefited from that. And it's a choice that is being made each time this council meets as to whether or not to grow the city. How often have you heard the statement, "We cannot afford to grow," or something similar to that? We need an aggressive growth plan, one that will gain the support of the community. And I'm not talking about just the community within the city limits, but the community of the surrounding area. This would take significant capital improvement dollars. Is this something to consider? Maybe we cannot afford to spend $16 million on a city police station in City Hall. Can this cost be reduced? Maybe we should consider just building a police station or a City Hall and give it a little time to digest. Let's look at how we make decisions. Most of us are not experts in everything that we decide. That goes for our personal life as well as you up here. So we tend to hire consultants. Again, good and bad. It's good if we get an unbiased advice on the direction to go. Going back several years, however, I doubt if anyone could say that we got good advice for the big price that we paid when we sold a cable company. Now we're left with the question of where to put a new City Hall and police station. It's costing us a lot of money to get that information. I frankly don't think we're getting our money's worth there. Thinking about future budgets, a few things are worth considering there. What would happen if a tornado took out Walmart today? Much of the city revenue disappears overnight. What would happen if the sales tax goes down to defeat tomorrow? Our revenues will continue to shrink because more and more internet sales will not be taxed for the city. Capital improvement functions are needed for more than City Hall. Annexation infrastructure, fire and police equipment, repair of existing facilities such as the Coliseum, removal of parking garages, demolition of unwanted houses and streets. It's my understanding that we have a 20-year backlog in tearing down dilapidated houses. And it's also my understanding that the vote on the issues that are before you tonight don't need city voter approval. I frankly find that a little bit offensive. I would suggest that you, as a City Council, convene a board, doesn't have to be formal, but invite the leaders in business from our community to meet with you and discuss some of these options. You don't just need input from a group tonight or input from whoever you've been getting it from, but you need some really reliable input from unbiased people. These experts don't necessarily need to be just from inside the city boundaries. We've got a lot of talent outside the city that needs to be brought into the decision-making. As a side note, it appears to me that there may be a more cost-effective location for the police station. That is expensive real estate out there. It sickens me to think that the city is getting in the business of land speculation.
Mr. Christman, that item is on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, let me get back up at that time. Thank you for letting me put my two cents' worth at this point.
Mr. Richardson, would you explain? We have a couple of speakers. Their items are on the agenda tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've been asked by the mayor to clarify exactly how our process works here, and it is very clear. It's a combination of city policy and Robert's Rules of Order. Under the city's long-established process, the citizens may have input at the beginning of every meeting on items that are not included on the agenda. If they are specifically included on the agenda, then those topics cannot be discussed during the general public input session, which is what we are in now. They would be referred, then, to the workshop session on the specific item that is on the Every meeting, we have a public input section that allows citizens to talk about anything they want to talk about. On the workshop session, citizens are invited and encouraged to participate on any items that are on the workshop agenda. If an item that is on the workshop agenda is passed to a voting session by a majority vote of the City Council, then it goes to the third section of our business, and that is a voting session. During that voting session, specifically under Robert's Rules of Order, only members of the council can discuss the items per con as they wish to discuss and debate those items that are on the agenda. The items that have already been worked their way through general public input through a workshop session or multiple workshop sessions of the council, as the case may be, certainly on a couple of items that we have tonight, they have been on multiple workshop sessions. Once it goes to the voting session, then it's first read, second read, and then there's a motion to pass the item, at which time members of the council have the allotted time to discuss and debate whether or not to adopt that particular ordinance or resolution, as the case may be. The only way that items that have already worked their way through the entire system and are now on the voting session agenda can receive public input is if, by a motion made by a council member, seconded by that council member, and passed by a majority of the council to invite additional public input, can there be public input during that section of the evening meeting? And that's where we are right now with a couple of requests that folks have said, well, we want to come up and talk about. Number one, I think, is item AA on the voting agenda, which is the location of City Hall, and item C, or CC as it may be, that deals with the purchase of, potential purchase of land on Shelby Road relative to a police station. So as we go through this process, those of you that have come tonight wanting to speak, you can speak on any item you want to speak on during public input. You can speak on any item that is on the workshop agenda as that item comes up, but when we get to the voting session, only City Council members can discuss and debate those items unless the City Council, by a motion, a second, and a majority vote, invites further public input. Mr. Mayor, does that answer your question for the public?
Yes, sir, I think it does.
Sir, I rise in the presence intended.
Mr. Pumphrey?
Does that mean that when the subject comes for vote, that the citizen will not have a right to enter into the debate or have any more to say on the subject?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what it means, Mr. Pumphrey. It means that, I'm sorry that you need hearing aids, so do I, but I'll speak as loudly as I can. The issues that are on the voting agenda for this meeting or any other meeting have worked their way through the process through multiple previous meetings, at which time the public, as well as the council members, have had ample opportunity for input. The two items that specifically there seems to be an interest in tonight, number one is a resolution on the location of the City Hall, a municipal court complex, and number two, the acquisition of land on Shelby Road. Those have received ample public input on the public input agenda. They have received ample input on multiple workshop agendas, and they have been moved to a voting session. Once it gets to that voting session, then only the council members can participate in a discussion and a debate about it unless and until the council members, by a vote, deviates from parliamentary procedure, or actually raise parliamentary procedure, to invite further input. But absent a motion passed by the City Council on the items that are on the voting session tonight, only the City Council members will participate in the discussion and the debate.
May I be brief?
Yes, sir. I have other people before you, Mr. Pumphrey. I have some people that want to speak before you.
You need to sit down, sir, until the other people that are on the agenda have been heard.
I said I'll be brief.
So you need to sit down until it is your turn, and it is not your turn.
I'll wait till you start to begin to debate it, but meantime...
In the meantime, sir, you need to sit down.
Give me a copy of all that, please.
No, sir, I won't. I don't have it. You need to sit down and let the other people that are here properly to present information to the council are heard.
I will wait.
Please wait in your chair.
I will wait as someone said previously, until hell freezes over.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sloan and Mrs. Craig, I would like to allow you an opportunity to speak, but on that item that you wanted to speak on, we cannot hear that item at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
David Sloan, 1414 South 14th Street. City Council seems to want to spend all of this money to, I don't know. And I look around downtown, and what I see is tents popped up down at the Black River, right there at the river, right there in downtown. We have streets that have potholes in them that could swallow a Volkswagen bug. We're not doing anything to do that. We have burned-out buildings that are downtown. We're not taking care of them. But we're willing to just frivolously spend money, in my opinion, because we ain't taking care of anything that's already existent. Can we look at funding some of those? Can we look at funding some of our streets? We still have dirt roads inside the city limits, and we call ourselves a city. You know, I understand that we're rural Missouri. Are we Poe Dunk Kentucky now, too? You know, I'd really like an answer. Are we going to fund any of these things? Are we even going to attempt to upgrade any of this? We have buildings that are rat-infested. They have garbage out in front of them. They've been there for as long as I've been here, and I've lived in here for 12 years. In my opinion, it's a disgrace. And I think that some of you council members are great people. I really do. I'm thankful to call you all friends. But let's be honest, our city's going down the drain. You walk down the main road through our city, and literally, as you're driving through at 35 miles an hour, you can see cigarette butts accumulating next to the curbs. You can't even see that in St. Louis. Are we going to just ignore these things about our city? This is where we all live, isn't it? We all live inside the cities. We all live in a ward. I ain't going to take up any more of y'all's time. Thank you.
We have Charlotte Craig. Would you like to speak on any other item?
Well, yes and no. I don't know how to answer that. I think I'll wait until the council decides whether further input is in order. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Pam Chadwick. I live at 539 South D Street. I'm here over an issue of a yellow line on a public street, taking up two parking spaces in front of this gentleman's house that he's remodeling. He's not there most of the time, but we can't park there, as I work across the street at the school. We can't park in either one of those spaces because he's had the city come out and put a yellow line last year. He told me that I couldn't park there. He was an ex-police officer and whatever. So I went to the police department, and I asked them. They said, "That's not unusual. They don't usually put yellow lines on a public street." But to call the street department to make sure that they actually put it there, that he didn't put it there itself. So I called the city, the street department, and they said that, yes, they did put it there. I talked to the gentleman that actually put the line. He, at that time, told me that they put it there because this gentleman said that he needed both spaces because he was making a driveway. The pictures that I gave you, I gave you today. I took those today. As you can see, there is no driveway even started. This was supposed to have occurred over a year ago. The gentleman asked me to give him a couple months and be patient, and I have. I've been patient for over a year. I don't understand why I called them again today. I did park there a few days ago. My son-in-law had a heart attack. I had to take my grandkids to school. I was late. So I moved his cone, and I did park in one of those spaces, not the one in front of the house, the one more to the side. He called the police. It was roughly around 8:30-ish. I went out, and I explained what happened. I moved my vehicle, and the police officer said he would get ahold of the street department and find out because they didn't know anything about this either. When I called the street department back today, the lady that answered told me that the boss said the line is staying. I don't understand why he can have that yellow line blocking two parking places in front of an empty house that he is not even working on all the time. I'm not sure this is where I was supposed to bring it to, but it just is really, the guy is not nice about it at all. He used, it's his personal parking, is basically what it is.
What was this address again?
The address, I'm not sure the exact address of the house. It is between 905 is on one side, and I think the others, the house on the other side is like 817. But there's not an actual address on that house.
And what street was this?
Apple Street.
Apple Street?
I'll go by and check it out tomorrow morning, Mr. Mayor, and see what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all we had for citizens' input. Items for discussion. Item A. The City Council will discuss a recommendation to update the International Building Code, International Fire Code, and the International Mechanical Code, HVACR. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he stated, the first item is a recommendation to update the International Building Code, the International Fire Code, and the International Mechanical Code. Those codes currently are using the 2012 version. They're updated every three years by the International Code Council, and so what we're asking is to update those from 2012 to 2018. You should have received in your packets a letter from Fire Chief Ralph Stucker about his recommendation for the Fire Code being updated, and also the Mechanical Code. The HVAC Board went through that book and is making that recommendation also. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Real questions. I entertain a motion to move this to the voting session on the 18th.
Ladies and gentlemen, for public discussions and...
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, councilpeople. I want to thank you for this opportunity to express my First Amendment right to discuss the provisions of what the City Council is doing. I think Fire Code and Mechanical is important to this city, so I come to praise the City Council for what they've done here, because it will reduce insurance means, provide better fire and police participation in the community. And as we build new buildings, you know, like a police building and City Hall, it'd be important to build those codes to a proper code, so in case of insurance or anything like to maintain the buildings, we'll have these codes that we'll have to build the buildings up to, to make sure our insurance bills are not high. So I come to praise the City Council for doing something that will effectively bring down the budget costs of this community. And I thank certain members of the City Council for being very progressive. Mr. DeGarris, I'm always proud that you are on the council, and my comments were never directed toward you as a city person. I just may have seen. I respect you greatly. And Mr. Smith, the mayor. So I want to thank you two, because I'm sure you're instrumental in providing these actions to the City Council and forward-looking to our community to help reduce the cost. I wish the rest of the City Council to continue to be forward-minded, to look at the cost, especially in the maintenance of buildings, that we bring these insurance costs down in the city, so as our budget grows, that we're able to maintain them at an affordable rate. It's important when you are planning a city, new City Hall, or new police station, or fire, hopefully, fire stations, too, that we don't forget about fire stations in this community, that they'll need to be built to Code 2. It's important to put public input into these matters as we discuss them. I think in certain matters, maybe perhaps this or others that could be brought to a vote tonight, to maybe be put forth to the public as a referendum, because important things should be brought to the public, let them state their concerns. But I'm sure in this matter, that it would be best that you discuss this and move it to a voting session and take a vote on it, because it's important to bring the maintenance cost down for the city so we can afford it. And I think that it's necessary that the public be involved in these discussions. I think open sessions, even to the things that are unvoting, actual card items, should be allowed, because basically, that's part of our free speech. I want you to continue to please make these advancements for the city, as I'll be able to speak on each item tonight and express my congratulations on what you're doing. But hopefully, as you contemplate these new codes, you know, as complete the future of our town, and if I now... complete the future of our town and the financial aspects behind it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first off, I'd just like to say thank you for the vote confidence, but the city planner talks with the fire chief and police chief and code enforcement and comes up with these changes for these type of codes. And I'd still like to make a motion to move this to the voting session November 18th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item B. The City Council will discuss a recommendation to adopt the 2018 International Residential Code. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, sir. So currently, we don't have residential building code in place. And so what the Planning Department is recommending is that we adopt the 2018 International Residential Building Code that creates minimum regulations for the construction of one- and two-family residential dwellings within the city limits.
Is this for new construction?
This is for new construction of residential properties, yes.
Any further discussion?
Make a motion to pass to the voting session.
Jim Crispin, 464 North Main. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. One of the things that I have been concerned with for a long time is the items on the workshop really don't get to the public. The people out here don't hear about what's the details on this. That was the first item that you mentioned here. What really are we talking about as far as updates? Where is that published? Is it on a website somewhere that we can look at it and comment on it, or decide? You know, I'm really concerned that too much business of the Poplar Bluff City Council happens behind closed doors. You've got a vote coming up. You've got a vote coming up. I was gonna save this comment for a little later, but apparently, there's not gonna be any comment later. But you've got, you have asked for an internet sales tax to be passed tomorrow. Your vote on one of the issues tonight will influence my vote very much in that decision.
Robert Smith, 51 North Fifth Street, Poplar Bluff. I think that's another recommendation and another, actually, improvement to the city is to adopt the residential code, because I think the past years, 30 years ago when I had my house worked on, I know the gentleman who worked on my house put the HVAC system and surely didn't build it to any code. But as, you know, again, the City Council needs to be congratulated, but also should also, like Mr. Crispin said, we should present these things more open, more open dialogue, especially the residential code and how it affects each of us, on the new residents and old ones, and what we, what to take care of, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, or what. It's a myriad of questions. I just have all these questions, and I don't know how to express them, because, you know, with our freedom of expression sometimes limited, we can't always say what we need to so quickly. We need maybe time to think about it and bring it open and discuss it. Maybe on Facebook, you know, that'd be a proper discussion to put the issues, or in a newspaper. So we ask that, yeah, that's interesting that we're going to the International Code 2018, but why do we wait to 2018 to fill a residential code in? Is that something we should have done before to reduce our insurance, our building cost? Maybe we should have some open forums, especially on items that, you know, are gonna cost a million dollars or more. I think limiting the dialogue is just incredibly irresponsible. But thank you for your advance working on this, Mr. Winters. I'm sure you're responsible for this. Maybe like they said, the council's not as progressive as you are. Thank you.
Thank you. To add to what Mr. Smith and Mr. Crispin were asking about, the agendas are published in our local newspaper. They are posted at City Hall. They're on the Poplar Bluff website, and they're usually posted three to four days before the meeting. I mean, that's just some info, so it is out there. Any further discussion?
I'll second Councilman Black's motion to move it to the voting session.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item C. The City Council will discuss a recommendation to adopt the 2018 International Existing Building Code.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna let my seat get cold and stand through all these. So the Planning Department, again, is making a recommendation that the city adopt the 2018 International Existing Building Code. These, this is another code that we don't have in place. Currently, and it addresses repairs and remodeling work on existing structures, both commercial and residential, that are in the city limits.
Mr. Winters, just an example, let's say somebody is remodeling a home, and they remodel the kitchen or bathroom. Do they have to bring the entire building up to code under this ordinance, or just those facilities, those rooms they're remodeling? Could you kind of explain that a little bit?
Sure. The short answer is no. The longer answer is, you know, the existing building code looks at three different levels of repairs. Level one is basically, you're gonna go in and you're gonna paint, and you're gonna put down new carpet, and all that is required is that you maintain the level of code that was met prior to you painting and laying down carpet. Level two would be an example, like you stated, Mr. Madisonham, where a homeowner, property owner is going in and repairing a kitchen. And at that point, what the existing building code looks at is your workspace and where you're actually doing your work at. And so in that specific instance, then you would be required to bring the kitchen up to current codes. And then the third level that the existing building code looks at is if you're doing major renovations, which is, you're gonna spend 50% of the value of the home or more in repairs. And if you're doing a major renovation like that, then you are expected to bring the house up to code, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and those items, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any...
Jim Fisher, 606 Selma. I just have one question. Somebody needs to explain this international. You know, we're from the show-me state. They need to show us. Why do we need international regulations in Poplar Bluff? So we need to lay it out with this international stuff. Okay? Can you give the details tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
So just to address this question a little bit, so the International Code Council is the one that, is the organization that develops these building codes. There are standards that are used, as the name implies, internationally. Any city that has building codes in place in the state of Missouri, I have to say, I haven't researched cities outside the state of Missouri, but any city of our size or larger that has building codes in place use the International Code Council's standards. They're updated every three years. It's really not recommended to update your codes every three years. It's better to be on a more of a six-year cycle, kind of like what we're going for here. But they are used, in all the cities I've looked at throughout Missouri, there's not a city I've found that doesn't use these exact same codes, whether it's Farmington or Poplar Bluff, or Sykesville, or Jackson, or St. Louis. You know, this is the standards that electricians across the country use. This is the standards that plumbers across the country use, and the most widely accepted standards there are for building and construction trades.
And these codes are actually, I mean, they're really there to protect the consumer?
They are. They're there to ensure that what is being done, the work that's being done, is being done to protect your safety, the safety of the structure that you're building, to prevent fires, to prevent your toilets backing up and those kind of things, yes. We currently have 2012 codes in place. What I'm asking this council to do tonight is update those codes from 2012 to 2018 to bring us into better compliance with the current building practices. A lot of new materials have been developed and are in use more widely now than they were six years ago. A lot of new practices that have been developed, especially when you get into the specific trades that weren't available six years ago.
And these codes, I mean, they're not just a few little pages of instructions or rules. They're actually huge, thick books.
They are very detailed manuals that lay out the work that people in the field are doing on a daily basis, yes.
Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Of course, sorry, it's another step progress as we implement these codes. It's going to affect remodeling, correct, Mr. Winters? So what I... Thank you. We're going to apply these codes when we remodel our homes.
Yes, sir.
And the landlord-tenants association, landlords in those houses, when they, when a tenant moves out, and they have to remodel that house, they'll have to follow these codes too.
Is that correct?
So everybody in the city will have to follow these codes now. Okay. Thank you. That's would be definitely, because I represent a lot of tenants, and they'll be glad to hear that landlords are gonna have to, when they remodel the house before they move in, will have to follow the codes. I'm sure Greg West will be very excited about that. I want to thank you all again, the council, for trying to bring our community up to safe standards. It's important that we have our communities in safe, in safety and a logical and collusion matter. You know, as these matters are discussed here at the meeting, I understand that each council person gets a package of the council documents three or four days ahead of that, in advance. And I would encourage the city to put those online so the city, so the city citizens could see these facts. You can do it through Google or some kind of a Dropbox, and the citizens then could see what the issues really are, because it doesn't give us enough time to look at a workshop or, you know, five minutes to be able to discuss and take in the implications of everything. But if we would have access to the, maybe the code, or even though it's 4,000 pages or 5,000 pages, it would be nice to, at the city, to know what, where we're moving toward, the citizens of the city, because, you know, addressing the citizens' needs and their concerns are important in a city council meeting, and we should encourage their participation at all levels and all times. Again, this is what we're doing tonight. This time is encouraging citizens to speak and recommend to the city that these important standards are adopted, if they don't hurt the, maybe the senior citizens who have the old home down the street that they want to remodel and they can't afford. If they put a new sink in the kitchen, well, that means they have to do the wiring and the plumbing too, because that means they'll be, their electrical will be locked because they can't afford to rewire the kitchen or the living room. These are concerns that need to be discussed openly in the, you know, but the citizens need facts and information, not just, you know, amounts like 17 million. I mean, what the heck? What are we gonna spend 17 million on, you know? Is this project gonna cost citizens 17 million dollars to redo their kitchens? We should discuss all these things. But thank you very much.
Do we have a motion to move this on?
I make a motion to move it to the voting session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item D. The City Council will discuss a recommendation to adopt the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last one for me.
Aren't you glad?
The Poplar Bluff Police Department, along with the Poplar Bluff Planning Department and code enforcement officers, are recommending that the city adopt the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. It's a, basically, it's a supplement to our existing nuisance ordinances, allowing the code enforcement and building inspector, you know, some more tools in their toolbox to address problem properties.
I keep asking all the questions.
Ask away, sir.
I know you and I talked today a little bit about this, so, and you've been working on this for months and months, and I appreciate you bringing it to the council now. But the question was asked to me on the property maintenance code, are we getting to a point sometime in the future where rental property would be inspected either once a year or once every time it changes tenants?
You know, we actually have an ordinance on our books now that says that we could inspect annually on occupancy changes for rental properties. And to be honest, I would like to see the city go to that eventually, in the future at some point. Right now, you know, we don't have the staffing capabilities to do that. You know, this, when we get to that point, this International Property Maintenance Code would be a part of that program. But before we would ever get to that point, like I said, we would have to have some, see an additional staff person. And really, our ordinance right now, it just states that, it doesn't get any details about an inspection program. It just, and I actually printed it off, looking at it this afternoon, what we have on the books right now says that the building inspector or authorized representative is authorized to make annual change of occupancy inspections. Or, and this is where this property maintenance code is gonna come into play, or upon a complaint or a safety check on rental properties, residential properties, or commercial properties located in the city limits. So it doesn't, you know, it also doesn't just apply to rental properties. It applies to commercial properties. It applies
Any discussion from the council?
Much too tall, Mr. Winters. I think this is, Robert Smith, 51 North Fifth Street. Again, I think this is a great improvement, but how many code enforcement officers do we have now?
We have two.
Two? And I suppose if we had three, that would be a budgetary problem. Maybe four? We'd have to increase our incomes somehow, decrease our other expenses, to hire maybe four code inspectors. But I imagine when we build, you know, these buildings, we'll have to consider our budget ability to take care of the buildings and to hire more people that will make a difference to Poplar Bluff, like code inspectors. People would say, like, maybe the landlords, every time they relit a house, it should be inspected for code, and we could guarantee the safety of our citizens. I think this is a great recommendation. I think it goes forward to caring about the citizens of this great city, which I love, and I hope for the best that we learn how to take care of it properly. Well, these codes are a tremendous step forward, especially when we build new buildings. And then, as we discuss, you know, tax increases, and then talk about spending 17 million at the same time, is, what are taxes, are we gonna hire more code enforcement officers? Are we gonna pay the police? All the new police officers, full benefits, can we afford that? Does this code enforcement help us to budget the needs and address the citizens? Maybe if we had the package a week before, and the citizen could see the package, we'd really know. Maybe it shouldn't be done in the dark chambers of the City Hall. We ask for openness, and I appreciate maybe the city opening up discussion on the actual required items. Let's see what the city does now.
Jim Crispin, 464 North Main. Seems like Robert and I are the only ones talking tonight. I would like to invite others up, and I hope you will consider that is when the time comes. But I do have one question on this particular item, and that is, there's a lot of houses that are slated for demolition. When... When do those happen? It's my understanding that there may be as long as a 20-year backlog at the rate it's being torn down. Ron, you've probably got some, some more information on that. But are we going to tear down these houses that are, that are slated for demolition? Or are we going to stand for X number of years? And I think that's relative to this particular issue.
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe Mr. Massingham could clarify here. It, Mr., Jim, you are correctly, you are correct, it is a problem, and I agree with you 100 percent. And it's a budget issue. However, I know there's concern about the use tax tomorrow, it's those funds that take care of those kinds of operations and things, and thus the reason we do need that. It is, it is terrible that we are so far behind. I don't know if you can amplify anymore there.
One, I was mentioned earlier that, I don't remember who it was, said something about capital money to tear down buildings. I guess if we considered it one big capital project, we'd probably get, but just to go in and tear down a house here and a house there, I don't know if legally we can use capitals funds for that. We spend about 20, $25,000 a year tearing down houses, and we could probably spend $200,000 or $300,000 a year tearing down houses to get caught up. Luckily, the last couple of years, we've actually had some residents that did the demolition themselves or had it done, so we didn't have to take care of it.
Hopefully, as these codes would come into place, these buildings would be required to be kept up, and we would see fewer of those moving forward.
Yes, I would think so.
Mr. Sloan, did you have a comment?
I did. David Sloan, 14 South 14th Street. It's evident enough, the gentleman mentioned that we don't have enough zoning officials. We've only got two. What would it take to put another zoning officer on? Another $60,000 a year? Something like that, $65,000 a year to put another zoning official on? Well, you know, we're frivolously spending money. We don't have streets, we have homeless people, our streets are nasty, we don't have enough zoning officials, it's evident enough, we don't have enough police officers. So what are we doing with all the money?
80 percent of it goes to personnel and benefits.
But we can afford to have a surplus of what? What's our surplus right now?
In general fund, it's about $4.5 million. In the health insurance fund, it's in the whole $1,000,000 and $1,500. In the Coliseum fund, it's in the whole $1,000,000. In the pool and fitness center, it's in the whole about $400,000. And in the airport, it's in the whole about $300,000. And it's been like that for, probably since 2010, 2011, something like that.
That far in the hole?
Yes.
My goodness, then I stand corrected, I shouldn't, you know, be on up here, you know, insulting you all that we're about to spend 17 million dollars.
That's a different fund. Once again, that's capital money that can't be spent for any of those other things.
There continues to be a lot of confusion, and it's so, and it's understandable.
It is.
That the city has two revenue streams, and those cannot cross. And the operations is where we are really struggling, and the concerns that you're mentioning, that the capital funds cannot be used across by law.
I'm Phyllis Baker, 3500 Marble Hill Road, and my husband and I are landlords. We're members of a group with other landlords. It would be fantastic if we could all work together, and I guess this is the first I've heard that we'll be updating standards. It's something that we would like to know about. It's important that when we do our work, we do it one time, when a tenant moves or when we remodel. And it's a matter of communication, I'm not criticizing, I applaud, but can we work together? It is true, what was said previously, five minutes doesn't give us much time. It's not that we oppose, it's that it, we're a group. I'd like to propose that you be more open about some things that, how many times can I say it, that we can work together on. And it's better to work together than one pull one way and one another way. We all want the same thing. The landlords in this city provide a valuable service, and we do, we do a decent job, in my opinion. So, Mr. Winters, I would, I would just like to propose that you work with the landlords, maybe on a different level than what's happening now. Not a criticism, a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to move this on.
Make a motion, move this to the voting session on the 18th.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items AA, resolution number 1908. The city council will take action on a resolution determining a downtown location for a city hall building site.
Motion for the reading of resolution number 1908.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
Give me just a moment, please, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you.
To catch up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Resolution number AA, a resolution determining the intent of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to locate a new city hall and municipal court complex in downtown Poplar Bluff.
Is that all the detail the public gets on this?
This has came through a discussion phase, and it has been for quite some time. It's time to take some action on it now, sir.
I make a motion, we adopt.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution number 1908 is adopted. Item BB, resolution number 1909. The city council will take action on resolution making an appointment to the airport advisory board.
Motion for reading the bill 1909.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making an appointment to the Poplar Bluff Airport Advisory Board of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Young.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution number 1909 is adopted. Item CC, bill number 8188. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with First Missouri State Bank for the acquisition of land.
We're asking the city council to go off the agenda and make a motion to open up for public discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would request unanimous consent for approximately five minutes to comment on the purchase of 58 acres.
Sir, you have to have unanimous consent. You do not have unanimous consent at this moment.
I'm having trouble, I think you just invited public comment.
No, sir, we do not, and you are out of order, sir, you need to sit down.
Well, when, when will we, will we have public comment before the vote?
Two weeks ago, two months ago, two years ago, and a decade ago. Where were you, sir? Please, you are not recommend, you're not recognized, sir, you need to sit down.
I asked to be recognized.
You need to sit down, sir, you're, you have not been recognized by this council, sit down, please.
No, sir, we do not have unanimous consent.
The council is the one that has to do that.
I'll see you in court.
We normally do.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to execute documents for a partial gift and purchase of real estate located on Shelby Road, Poplar Bluff, Missouri, for use as a new police station and other purposes, or resale of the real estate.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to execute documents for a partial gift and purchase of real estate located on Shelby Road, Poplar Bluff, Missouri, for use as a new police station and other purposes, or the resale of the real estate. No, that was a second.
You're ready for adoption.
It's ready.
Motion for adoption.
Motion is ordered for adoption.
Motion for adoption.
Roll call vote, Ms. Young.
Will you allow the comment be in order?
That will be up to the members of the council. Do we have any, do we have any consent?
You have a motion and a second to adopt. Now it's open to discussion. If there is no discussion by the council, whether you have a motion to invite discussion.
A point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, this is entering into the acquisition, there would still be a vote to finalize and accept, is that, is, am I correct there? Clarification, yes.
That is correct. This is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the document that has been attached to it, which is the gift slash purchase agreement that the manager and city attorney negotiate with him. Upon the execution of that, then there will ultimately be a second vote to approve the closing of that sale, and then any future use of that property and the allocation of portions of that use, for various reasons, would also be subject to future city council action.
Okay, so the, the other documents that you're talking about, that will go through a workshop and session, and all it says is could come in contact and speak at that time on that?
This, this ordinance and the attached agreement authorizes the mayor to execute that and take it through closing. That will be the last vote on the acquisition of the property. The use of the property will come back before the council for various future workshops for any use of it that you may determine, or resale of it, as you may determine. This will be the last vote by the city council as far as the acquisition of the property. Does that answer your question, councilman?
Yes. Okay. So I think most, most of the citizens probably that came in are wanting, this is the item they're wanting to talk about, so I'd make the motion that we let some of them have a brief discussion, even if we limit the time limit.
Microphone.
I would say most of the citizens have, that are out in the audience came to talk about this item, and I'd make the motion that we allow them to, some of them to speak, even if we shorten the time limit, if that's possible, or we have to stick to the original time that we have for discussions.
You can do anything you want with the majority vote at this council. Does your motion include a time limit, or is it just to open it up? Just for clarification.
I think we ought to have a time limit on some of it, if we do.
Does your motion include a particular time limit?
Five minutes is fine. Five minutes would be fine.
Okay. Okay. So I think, Mr. Mayor, the motion is to waive the rules of parliamentary procedure to allow further public input, citizens' input, limited to five minutes per person. That motion, of course, would need a second and a majority vote.
A second motion.
Okay, okay. Do we want to do a roll call?
I can't, yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It carries.
At this time, we will allow input from the public, a time limit of five minutes. Please be considerate of others. Excuse, excuse me, let me, let me have the lady in the blue first, because she did have a form, and then you'll be next, sir. Thank you so much. Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Charlotte Craig, I live at 1400 Lurleyan Drive in Poplar Bluff. I just wanted to say that, that I do believe that it's a good idea to buy as much land as we need for a new police headquarters, that it should be suitable, you know, in size and structure, with a generous parking lot and a garage or whatever they need. But I urge the council to resist the temptation to buy land that we don't need, and I would just point out that the juxtaposition of a ballot proposal to be voted on tomorrow to increase our own taxes to help the city budget, and a motion tonight to buy land that we don't need, some of which is not evidently usable, that juxtaposition, I think, is going to be, shall we say, interesting to a lot of voters. And the other thing that I would like to say, I may be misinformed on this, but it's my understanding that the... my understanding that the contract with the folks from St. Louis who want to supervise the building of the police headquarters has a time limit during which we can cancel it or the city can cancel it. And I would urge the council to, if it hasn't already passed, to consider doing that since much of what that firm is going to do duplicates what the local firm of Dillian Traxel would be doing anyway. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Michael Doran and I own several pieces of property in Poplar Bluff. I have just one question. I think you're talking about 58-acre tract of land. Is that correct? Do you have any calculation or any estimate as to how much taxes First Missouri would be paying on anything over and above the four acres that you actually need? In other words, it appear to me that you're giving up a lot of possible revenue to be able to acquire this land and then get into a business of reselling the land, hopefully to recover some of your money. I'm not sure what the charter is of this city, but I can imagine that it's to be in the real estate speculation business. Thank you.
Didn't get all my thoughts together, but a couple of points that I would like to make. This location is at the edge of the city, the very edge of the city. It adjoins county property that's probably not going to be developed in the near future. So 25 percent of the area that's facing out from the police station will not have a population base at all. Why do you want a police station at the edge of your city? I would echo the thought of the person that said, "We're not in the land speculation business." There's no way it ought to be. And I think whoever placed the value of the land must have been smoking some of that funny weed because the population, there's a lot down by your house, Ed, at the end, five acres down there that could be bought for $15,000 to $20,000. That's $4,000 an acre. You're paying $20,000 an acre for this. It's way, way, way overpriced for the value. Now, part of it may be worth more than 20,000, the four acres, but certainly not the 50 acres. I had another point that I wanted to make, but I don't see it right now, but please take into account all of this and reject this particular option.
If there be no further input, we would like to move on. I believe we had a motion and a second on the floor for adoption. Okay. Roll call vote, Mrs. Young.
Councilwoman Horton? Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Bill number 8188 is adopted. Item DD, bill number 8189, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving the rezoning of 1519 and 1529 Cooley Street owned by Andrew and Deborah Clark.
Motion for first reading of bill 8189.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance rezoning properties located at 1519 and 1529 Cooley Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance rezoning properties located at 1519 and 1529 Cooley Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8189 is adopted. Item EE, bill number 8190, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid regarding the Ball Lane Water Tower demolition project.
Motion for first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid from Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Maintenance Company of Henderson, Kentucky for the demolition of the Ball Lane Water Tower in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid from Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Maintenance Company of Henderson, Kentucky for the demolition of the Ball Lane Water Tower in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption of bill 8190.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8190 is adopted. Item FF, the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, section 16, point 21, point 1, point 2, point 3, point 9, point 11, point 12, point 13, and point 14, Rev. Statute of Missouri, following the City Manager's report.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
The only thing I have is to let you all know we've been working on the budget now for, well, the department started working on it about a month and a half ago and I've got it all now, putting it together. So we should have it to council, the first meeting in December for workshop. That's really all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We will take a five-minute recess and we will reconvene.